We have a few items to take care of from the council before we call into session the two other boards that are attending with us this evening. First item from the council would be to consider approval of the minutes from three common council meetings on August 21, the afternoon meeting of the budget, morning meeting of the budget hearings, the afternoon meeting of the budget hearings, and then on the regular meeting of August 25. So those are three minutes that are considered for approval this evening. Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes as presented this evening?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion by bounds to approve the minutes?
Seconded.
Seconded by McCarron. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council also was presenting a claim docket before the meeting. Any questions or comments on the claims as presented?
Make motion to approve the claims.
Motion by Kissel to approve the claim, seconded by Devon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We have advertised and now would hereby call to order a meeting of the Huntingburg Board of Public Works and let the record show that the members of the Board of Works are present and we do have a forum existing present for that meeting. And also call to order a meeting of the Utility Rate Advisory Board and there are four members of the advisory board present and we do have a forum for that meeting as well. Who's next? So we do have, we have a forum present for both of those boards. The purpose of having all boards meeting at the same time is to consider a proposed rate ordinance for our wastewater utility. All of these boards are involved in that decision and will take action this evening in that matter. That is for improvements made to the wastewater utility and just to start us off, I'd like to call on Teresa Chris-Hartwig from Commonwealth Engineering, who is our engineering team, to give us a brief explanation of the project that is before us at this time. Teresa?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. As I said, I'm Teresa Hartwig with Commonwealth Engineers and we were hired to evaluate the present and future conditions of the existing wastewater treatment plant. Your treatment plant was constructed in 1957 and then we had due to some upgrades in 1973 and 1996. We looked at the plant's 2016 through 2019 MROs. They were examined with respect to the treatment capacity of your current treatment plant and it is operating at 127% of capacity. An IDIM can enact a sewer ban at 90%. Also during high wet weather events, the city is forced to bypass wet weather flows around the main treatment process to a side stream treatment system. So the study looked at a number of alternatives to address the problem and the best recommended alternative was to construct a new sequencing batch reactor wastewater treatment plant, commonly known as SBR, with a design average daily flow of 3.35 million gallons per day and a peak daily flow at 9.5 million gallons per day. So the new plant would give the city of Huntingburg room to grow with residential and commercial growth and allow you to meet your regulatory requirements during wet weather events. The total project cost with construction and non-construction cost was 19.7 million. We submitted an application to USDA Rural Development for their funding and was issued a letter of conditions for a 40-year loan at an interest rate of 1.125. Because that interest rate was so low, we also added some of your existing debt that's at a higher interest rate than that as part of the project as well. That's a quick overview of the project.
Any questions on the project itself at this point? It has been explained, but we just want to make it part of the record here this evening as well. With that, I would ask Buzz Krone, Krone and Associates, who has determined to develop the rate ordinance based on the data that Teresa has discussed on costs and et cetera that are associated with this project. So Buzz, would you go through the numbers as we have them today? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and as Teresa pointed out, the project costs, total project costs with all the potential optional pieces, the baseline projects 18 million, but with all the optional features which included solar, there are some other upgrades that were bid separately from the base project. But again, at that, with the funding we're getting through USDA, it's probably, you know, we'll see how the bids come in, but we'd probably want to do all the add-ons if we can at that, at 1%. And you're going to have to do the decommissioning anyway. I don't know if that bid, I would think that's going to be a necessity as well. But the funding, as Teresa indicated, we've got in a letter of conditions from the USDA Rural Development and it's really a tremendous program and very timely for our project here. To get a 40-year term at 1.125%, that's probably less than half of what the inflation rate is. So they have also agreed to refinance all our existing debt at that same rate and term. So that helps considerably too. When I first got the project cost estimates and didn't know we had the USDA funding in the works, I ran the numbers at a typical SRF, state revolving fund bond issue and just pancaking that on top of our existing debt and you don't even want to hear what those percentages were. But at any rate, we're looking at, again, the total projects with all the add, the potential add-ons, 19.6 million. And then there's a little over 4 million that, right around 4 million of existing debt that will get rolled into the, both the RD loan, but before that, they have a partner program with the Indiana Bond Bank. Rural Development doesn't like to do their closing until after the project's completed, but they have a program with the Indiana Bond Bank and we're applied for and we've had lots of discussions with their staff and technical people already and we're geared up to do, actually, they usually fund the construction phase, but they're also going to fund our design phase also. On a project this big, we don't have all the funds in the coffers to do the preliminary, you know, the engineering and getting ready to bid. So we're going to do a bond anticipation note for that phase of the project. Again, we're going to get that same 1.125% interest rate on the bond anticipation note. About $2 million will cover all the preliminary costs of getting us to the bidding point. And then when we get to award the bids, we will roll that bond anticipation note into what I'm calling ban number two and that will pay off that preliminary bond anticipation note plus all the construction costs and they'll refund all our debt at that point also, which was extremely helpful because the working group we've had has just been really focused on wanting to make the impact on our rate payers as little as possible, particularly this first phase with the COVID situation and people being, a lot of unemployment to really beat down that first phase of the rate adjustments that will still be necessary to do the whole project. But it really, this funding program we have cut what would have been a rate increase in less than half of what it could have been had we not had this USDA program that we're utilizing. So in the end, we'll have about $23.6 million in total bonds outstanding. It'll first be, we'll consolidate all the existing bonds into one bond anticipation note with all the construction funding. And then at the end of construction, that will be taken out by a Rural Development loan and then our 40-year term starts at that point. So when we look at our current debt service payments right now, with our, just the bonds we have outstanding now, it's a little over half a million dollars a year. When we refinance all that with the new Rural Development loan, our total bond payments, including our existing and the new money, would be about $740,000. So it's only about a $200,000 jump. It would have been over double if we didn't have this special program from USDA. And they've been really terrific to work with. They've been over backwards to help us get to this point. The projected revenue requirements throughout the construction period are displayed here. The biggest variables are going to be the debt service piece for the existing and proposed debt and then the amount of funds we have left over for, we call it debt coverage, debt service coverage, but it really goes to fund our depreciation or replacement fund. We're kind of using it as a dual purpose. Actually, there's a third purpose. We have to beef up our debt service reserve fund by a couple hundred thousand more also. So the depreciation allowance or the allowance for projects and coverage are all, it's really fulfilling three purposes. The bond bank's minimum coverage requirement's 125% and we're going to end up around 140% assuming bids come in where we're estimating things at this point. So the, when we get to the end, we'll have about 300, we'll have around 300,000 or so for our coverage allowance and that really funds our depreciation and replacement fund for the equipment. The equipment will probably need to be replaced on a 20-year cycle, whereas the treatment plant, I think our existing plants were at, lasted 70 years, but with some major upgrades in between. But the structural part of the treatment plant should last a long time and this one will have several room for expansion two or three times. So as we get out beyond that 20-year horizon, additional expansions can be made at a relatively nominal cost compared to building a new structure like we're facing today. So again, the replacement allowance, again, we've got to build up another 200 grand in our debt reserve fund and then beyond that, it will help our working capital and building up a depreciation or replacement fund. We get down to the bottom line there, we've got basically three phases, phases of proposed rate adjustment. Phase one, and again, this has probably been cut in half from where we started with phase one and rather than front-end loading the rate increase, as is maybe more typical, the concern was that we didn't want to, we wanted to keep the initial rate that needs to go in this year as low as possible, recognizing the fact that there are people that are unemployed and having hard times right now. And then the other two adjustments, so we're at eight and a half percent on the first phase. That is proposed to be taken effect probably in the November billings. The phase two will kick in when we do the construction ban in 2020, October 1st, 2021. And phase three would kick in October 1st, 2022. We'll still be in the construction mode then, but the projects estimated to be fully completed by about the middle of 2024. So it'll be about an 18-month construction period. This next schedule summarizes the three-phase rate steps that we're proposing tonight and Phil Schneider's drafted a rate ordinance that basically articulates these changes. There are other rates in there that are not being proposed to change at this time. Some of your connection fees and system development charges are going to stay put for right now. But the, it's important that we have, we're able to show the bond bank and Rural Development that we will have rates kicking in place as we need them, as these bond anticipation notes are being incurred and as we get into the construction phase, having all the rates in place, scheduled to take effect, even though some of these won't take effect for a couple more years. We also put together some rate comparisons with other communities. A lot of these are communities of similar size, some of them are neighboring communities and then we've even got some bigger cities to compare with Jeffersonville, Evansville, Indianapolis. And where we are right now in, with our baseline, our current rate, you know, we're on the lower end of the rate comps. As we make these steps, you can see where we end up and this is comparing an average customer bill of 4,000 gallons per month. Obviously, there are a lot of communities that have a lot higher rates than these, there are a lot of communities that have lower rates than these, but everybody goes through the same type of stair steps that we're facing right now at certain points in time. And when those major projects come up, you'll see big stair steps. Indianapolis, for instance, they're probably halfway through their long-term control plan. They used to be like $12 a month, they're at $53 a month now and they're not done. They're about halfway through their program. Evansville, you know, they've got quite a bit higher rates. Jeffersonville, those are bigger communities, but I wanted to show you that even with comparing to some of the bigger communities, your rates are not out of line. And in fact, even at the $65 level when we get to phase three, that's still considered sort of an average bill when you look at what the state revolving fund and Rural Development are seeing in other communities. That's, you're going to be pretty much right in the thick of their, you know, what's still considered to be a low-impact bill. Now, to get more specific though, we wanted to look at different levels of usage for your residential customers because I know that there's a, well, there's been a lot of concern expressed in our working group about particularly the residential customers and particularly the single elderly widow fixed income type user that, a way below average user. And I think you can see, I sort of highlighted the 1,000 gallon a month as a small user and you've got, would you say, Brad, about 700 or 800 customers that?
558 customers from under 2,000,000 gallons.
Under 2,000.
Yeah.
So that 1,000 gallon customer might catch a lot of the, those people that are, you know, most financially, you know, fixed income type person. Their phase one rate would go from $30 and 18 cents to $32.74, about a $2.56 increase. The second phase, we'd be looking at about a $3.77 increase for that customer to go to $36.50. And final phase, it would go up another $3.65 to a little over $40, $40.16. And, you know, we're hoping that that catches a lot of the most financially burdened folks. The 4,000 gallon increase, phase one is a little over $4 and phases two and three are about $6 each. So the 4,000 gallon customer is going to get, you know, about a $16 total increase compared with about a $10 increase for the 1,000 gallon customer. And I know everybody thinks they're average, but there's highs and lows that go into those averages and we wanted to make sure that you could kind of get a good feel for what different residential usage levels would have on the, on those customers. And where we are tonight, this, this may seem like a fast-moving thing to people that haven't been involved in the planning phase of this, but this has actually been in the works for just about a year probably, maybe more than a year. And originally, we wanted to roll this all out in, you know, early summer, maybe midsummer, but again, sensitivity to the COVID and people, you know, employment and so forth, you know, we've been slow to the draw, but now that we have this USDA money lined up, we need to jump on that and take advantage of that as best we can. And it's really, this could be a lot worse story than what we're faced right now because the original numbers I ran without the USDA program were over double what we're looking at here. So tonight, we'd like to get favorable recommendations from the rate advisory board and the Board of Works and then we'll proceed to introduce those ordinances at the council tonight and schedule a public hearing for September 22nd. That'd be the next council meeting. And assuming that all those approvals do take place, we hope to be able to close on the first bond anticipation note with the Indiana Bond Bank sometime the end of October or the 1st of November. We think we can meet that timeline and then the other phases will just, we've got the rates pre-planned, pre, in place. So hopefully, when we get to the, you know, the construction phase, that should be a smooth transition there to go from ban one to ban two and then ultimately going to, from ban two to the USDA 40-year loan at the end of construction. So that's sort of in a nutshell. I guess entertain any questions or comments?
Again, the actions that we're going to be looking at here this evening, the joint meetings of the Utility Rate Advisory Board and the Board of Works, that process would start with the rate advisory board. That is the board that can recommend to the Board of Works an action on increasing the rates. It's up to them to review that as a citizen board, make that recommendation and the Board of Works would act to recommend that same ordinance to the council. We do have members of both boards present and those boards are officially in session this evening with us. So I would ask the council members, any rate board members or Board of Works members, if you have any questions for Buzz, for Teresa, for representatives on the committee are here as well. I do want to mention that, they mentioned the committee that's been working on this. Buzz has been a member of that committee along with Teresa, Eric Parsley, Brad Coomer, myself, Steve McCarron has represented the city council on those. Phil Schneider, Tom Dippel have also been attending that along with Rachel Steckler and Lisa Gellhausen from Indiana 15. So that team has been meeting for the last seven months going through this proposal. There's been a lot of questions asked and answered during that time, but this is the public portion of this process. So if there's any questions from any of the board members about any of the process or where we are in this and what's proposed, I open the floor to, you know, questions currently?
I'm on the, I'm on the early line. I was concerned about the filling in the overflow basin and for the IDIM to have restrictions and that and if there's any cost calculated in there for that, if it has to be filled in and replaced. It was substantial.
We have it in a demo. We have 500,000 for the demo and they will have to be filled in.
For the demo?
Yeah, that's part of the demo.
It's part of the demo. So there is appropriate, but still have?
Yeah, I think it's happening. About $1 million.
Okay. Good question. Okay.
Yes?
I have a question, I guess a couple of questions. I guess my first question is, this has been going on for a substantial amount of time. Why is this happening and what were other options and why weren't those looked at or chosen, I should say?
I don't know, is Brad or Teresa, do you want to take a stab at that?
Do your question again, please.
I guess the first part of the question is, why are we doing this? And then the second part of the question is, were there other options that were laid out and why weren't those chosen?
Why we're doing this is because the green order, we do not have the green order to discharge and land our high-fuel activities in the plant. So therefore, and they took a pass in about 127% of last year in Commonwealth history. So IDIM could put us on sewer ban at 90%. So if we would do nothing, that means Hunter's Crossing, I mean, coming to Huntingburg businesses-wise, we're not going to allow it. So we have to upgrade it. Why, you want to notify, we've been, the committee's been working on this for seven months.
No, my question was, what were the other options that we looked at and why were these just?
We did look at other options. You know, if you look at the facility, it was built in 57 and there was another upgrade in 73 and 96. The real estate is very slim. There's numerous amounts of pipes in the ground and everything. The cost effective to add-on was double in the facility.
You still have the facility after you?
I guess one of the first options was, how can we expand, can we expand the current capacity or needs? And that cost was pretty, that was kind of eliminated from the very beginning. So with that option out, we started looking at options for, you know, can we add-on to the plant? Can we, can we do anything like that? And we just found enough real estate to meet the capacity need that we had. So if we were looking at a new facility, basically, we looked at three or four different options of types of treatment plants that we would have that would also, would meet our need and could accommodate the footprint that we had for the plant. So there were three or four different options looked at from before this option was settled on. And each of those had, you know, there were pluses and minuses in all those. I think one of the questions that I've received is, you know, that we are, I think, building a plant for the future as well. We're not building this to meet our needs today. We had an option where could we fade this in over a partial build over, that would accommodate our needs for the next 10 to 15 years and then decide how to go beyond that. And the funding that came available at a very low interest rate, I think that it became more and more reasonable to build the entire project now because of the favorable rates that we had. That kind of moved us towards this option again. And I think there's a factor of how do we, you know, what is investing for the rate payer as well? And I think absorbing this cost early on and being part of that was part of our consideration. So. So there were a lot of options looked at, and we had a question earlier about the technology involved, and we think we're investing in the right technology with our guidance from our Commonwealth team. We visit the sites that have operations like this, and this will be, I think, the most efficient plant that we can possibly have and gives us the opportunity for expansion should the projection, we're building on projections that we've had over the last 10 years. If Huntersburg would grow exponentially beyond that in the future, this type of design allows us to add on to that as well as we go along. So, you know, there's been a lot of groundwork done, and I, good question, but yes, we've evolved. I would say, Steve, you've been on the giving.
Yeah, the engineer, he's had to leave earlier, but the way he, the way he's explained it over the course of their study and as we come down this path of decision-making, it started with, it's basically, your treatment dollar basically doubled, the way I understand it, to add on or do an upgrade to the existing plant. So basically, it's a two to one on the money. And the technology we have is very old.
Yes.
And the newer technology is much more advanced, it's more cost-effective, it doesn't, it's more expandable. The real estate need will be, we won't need to invest in real estate for any length of time. And we did look at three or four different options as far as, you know, do nothing, but that doesn't offer 127% of capacity on many days.
Yes.
And we cannot allow, you know, we can't move one new person into Huntersburg and build one new house if they would come in and put a sewer ban, to my understanding. They have done that in certain areas before. It's been a while since I've heard of it. We need a plan for that. It does allow us to build it due to design work and cost analysis at our pace rather than at state's pace. And if they come in and decide to do something, they would probably fast-track it.
I have a couple more questions, I'm sorry. The 4,000 gallons, do we have an idea of how many of the residents are below that?
We have, the mayor has a sheet.
So as of right now, we have customers, we have, we have 676 customers that use over 4,000 gallons or above. We have 782 customers using between 2 and 3,000 gallons. And we have 558 customers using less than 2,000 gallons. So while the 4,000 gallon number is, that's the number that they use to calculate a lot of the rates from the different agencies that provide funding. But our experience is, so of those customers, you know, about a third of our customers are 4,000 or above, two-thirds of our customers are below that. The 782 customers between 2 and 3,000, and 558 customers below 2,000. So if you look at that scale of the impact on those customers, a customer at $2,000, or 2,000 gallons is around $2.55 on that first phase of the impact. Those between 2 and 3,000 are somewhere between $3.10 and $3.16, depending on usage in that 2 to 3,000 gallon range.
And that is all residential, none of the non-tenant?
That's all residential.
And the final question, because I know I'm going to get asked this question, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
We got Stellar money, why wasn't that money used for this?
The money that was, when the city earned the Stellar designation, there were three sources of funds that were available to us for use. And none of those funds could be used on projects of this type. The funding sources were the Indiana Department of Transportation, which they do not do projects of this nature. The Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, which does not do projects of this nature. The only source that could have possibly even been connected to this was OAKRA, with the Office of Community Rural Affairs, that does infrastructure projects. The money that was designated by Stellar, there were projects that we presented to them on how we were going to use it, and the projects that that infrastructure money went to were the infrastructure at Market Street Park, infrastructure on the 4th Street, water lines that were improved in that area. Those were spread over several different projects, but the two major ones were Market Street Park and 4th Street. And the infrastructure underneath the ground, which many people don't see, the improvements in the storm systems, to the sanitary sewer, to the water lines, that all happened underneath Market Street and 4th Street were part of the fund that came from OAKRA. So a project like this wouldn't have been eligible for any funding from Stellar Community Trace.
Thank you.
Any questions from any of the board members?
I remember one of the questions that had been posed in previous conversations was infiltration, you know, don't build bigger, just reduce the amount of infiltration from stormwater coming into the system. And I know that was addressed. There wasn't enough, even if money, maximum money had been spent on trying to find the leaking of the water into the system, it wouldn't have reduced the amount of water that needed to be treated enough to bring us below the requirement. We'd have still been over capacity, even if we were able to find a large amount of that water. And so that wasn't really a viable option to just focus everything on infiltration either. And that's been asked of me several times.
And that was Sandy's question too. That was probably the first thing that we said, where do we invest our money? Do we invest it in an infiltration program that reduces that amount of flow so we can reduce the size of the plant? And Huntersburg, over the last 15 to 20 years, has had a plan to address infiltration problems. So there's no big, I mean, and we're going to continue that, and that, this plan includes that. It includes money to continue that infiltration system where the Board of Public Works, Kerry and Keith have both been on that, we're making investments in equipment that can help us identify the higher problem areas. But even at our best guess of the work that has gone into that would not make a significant enough reduction to make a major investment in that. The return on investment in that infiltration was not as significant as the return on investment in building a plant that can handle the capacities of the amount of water flow that we're experiencing even in high-flow times.
And we are continuing to invest in reducing the influx. And we have many programs in place, and some of them have been in place longer than that, as far as the sewer level inspection and transfer ownership of properties and things like we've had for 20-some years. It's actually one of the more, like a pilot program for the state, I think.
The first community started that program.
What's that?
Huntingburg was the first program in our town to start that.
Yeah, I thought we were the pilot on that, and we've been doing it many years. So we've caught quite a few of our influx areas, but it's just...
It's an aging system?
It's an aging system.
Questions?
So next on the agenda, if there are no further questions about this time, the next thing on the agenda would be to consider a resolution for the Utility Rate Advisory Board to consider a resolution recommending a, regarding wastewater utility rates, recommending the rates as proposed in the report by Crowne Associates that we just reviewed. And so that would be resolution number one from the Utility Rate Advisory Board. Is that resolution 202001? Okay. So I think you have a copy of the resolution for your review. So are there any questions concerning the resolution of the Huntingburg Utility Rate Advisory Board, resolution 202001, as a recommendation to the Board of Public Works and common council on the scope and the cost of the proposed project for the sanitary sewer works?
The copy that you have distributed does have a paragraph, a typographical error in it, it describes three phases, October 1, 2020, October 1, 21, and October 1, 2022, 23, but it should be 2022. There's a blank second paragraph, date of Crowne Associates' special accounting report. It should be August 26.
Any questions on the board about the resolution? Doug, I would entertain a motion from the board to consider this resolution for approval. Motion from the board?
Salute.
Motion by Coleman, second. Second by Mr. Painter. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? All ayes, no nays, the resolution is hereby adopted on this night. So with that, action by Utility Rate Advisory Board, we're now going to action from the Board of Public Works, and this would be Board of Public Works Resolution Number 2020...
01.
01 as well, okay? And again, this is a resolution from the Board of Works to recommend to the city council the rates as reported by Crowne Associates to the committee here this evening. Do we have any questions about the resolution from the Board of Works? Doug, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Soder to approve, second by Blessinger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Signatures. With that, starting with the Board of Works, do you have a motion, any other items of business before that you need to consider? I would make a motion to adjourn the Board of Works.
Second.
Second by Blessinger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries to the Utility Rate Advisory Board, any other ayes before your vote. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Flick to adjourn, second by Young. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the Utility Rate Advisory Board is adjourned. So both the boards, I appreciate your work on this and your attention to the detail that we had to go through it this day, and appreciate your service to the community. So thank you very much for being part of the process. You're welcome to stay, and Kerry, more, we'll walk through a few more at the end of the night, but thank you for your service. With that, we do now have before us the Sewage Works Rate Ordinance, and that time will be ordinance number...
Well, I need to say it, but it's ordinance 202022.
202022. This would be an ordinance amending ordinance 201537, establishing the schedule of rates for the sewer works for the city of Huntingburg, and it reflects the rates as described in the proposal by Crowne Associates. Phil, anything else that needs to be mentioned in that?
Other than, it only changes the base treatment fees and volumetric fees and the flat fees for people that aren't moved, and the excess biochemical and surcharges for industrial waste. It does not increase the connection fees or the availability fees, reconnection fees, those all remain the same. And it is, as you'll notice, three phases. October 1 of this year will be the first phase, usage beginning October 1, November 1, then October 1 of 2021, and October 1 of 2022.
Questions from the board, council, from concerning the rates ordinance as proposed, 2022? Doug, I would entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance as presented.
Motion to introduce.
Motion by McFerrin.
I'll second it.
Second by where? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, the ordinance is hereby introduced. As part of our process, as such an ordinance that has any kind of changes, is required to have a public hearing before it can be enacted, and we have, I would like the board to consider scheduling a public hearing on the wastewater utility rates for 5:30 p.m. on the 22nd of September, which will be our next scheduled council meeting. So would I, would there be a motion to set that date as the public hearing date for this ordinance?
Make that motion.
Motion by Kissling.
I'll second it.
Second by Bowles. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. There's hereby a public hearing scheduled for the 22nd, 5:30 p.m., here at the council chambers, to consider the rate ordinance before it is adopted. Similarly, we have an ordinance before us for sewage works revenue bonds. Phil, do you want to explain a little?
Yes, the ordinance you have before you would allow you, authorize the city to issue its sewage works revenue bonds in a maximum amount not to exceed $25 million. And that figure's higher than financial report, the accounting report you saw today. There's some little fluff built in just in case the bids come in high. It gives us the opportunity to do, to make some choices if that becomes absolutely necessary. We don't anticipate going that high. But it would authorize also those ban, bond anticipation notes to finance the design and bidding procedures, and then the construction, and then the rural development, the bond issue would take it out at the very end. This proposed ordinance, you could adopt tonight on a single reading, but it's recommended that you pull it over until after the rate ordinance is adopted. It's a four-year bond issue at 1.125%, and it would ruin, as Mr. Crowne indicated, not only the construction costs and the design and engineering costs, but also the existing department debt, you know, workforce and totally debt.
That would be ordinance 2020...
23.
23. So we have before us ordinance number 202023, concerning refunding of certain city bonds and issuing the bonds for the city of Huntingburg Sewage Works Project. So any questions on 202023? Doug, I entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Motion to introduce.
Motion by McFerrin.
I'll second it.
Second by Bowles. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. As recommended by the city attorney, we will hold this ordinance over for final adoption after the rate ordinances would be approved, and we would approve this considered for approval after the next meeting.
Here's Brooke Martin, I'll be gone in 20 seconds.
Also related to this project, we have before you three letters of engagement. These are letters that are required, Phil, by the funding agencies, is that correct?
That's correct. They want engagement letters from each, engagement agreements from each of the professional services organizations, local legal counsel, ICE North as bond counsel, and Crowne Associates as the financial advisor.
So this would be, these are basically part of our application and our requirements for the funding that we've just discussed from both USDA and from the Economic Development Association. They have to have these professional agreements in place as part of our process. So you have before you agreements with Phil Schneider Law, with ICE North and Crowne Associates that would meet the requirements of the funding process that we're engaged in. Any questions on those letters of engagement?
Do we need to prove these separately or do we need to apply?
I would do each one separately.
Any questions? Any questions? So concerning the legal services agreement with Attorney Schneider, do you have a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Motion by Bowns, second.
I'll second it.
Second by McFerrin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Concerning the engagement letter with ICE Miller, I have a motion to enter into that letter of agreement.
Make that motion.
Motion by Ware.
I'll second it.
Second by Dubon. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? Motion carries. We have an engagement letter with Crowan Associates. I have a motion to approve the engagement letter with Crow.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kissling.
Second.
Second by Ware. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Engagement letter is approved. With that, Mr. Schneider, anything else? I thought the council in the seat.
Nothing.
Mr. Dipple?
Nope.
Anything else from the council? Before we close, I do want to, I mentioned a lot of folks, but Buzz Crowe, thank you for your work on this. You played back some presentation and working through the details of a lot of this. We appreciate your work, and we'll see you again in two weeks to be able to answer more questions, so thank you for your work. Any other items from the council? Any items from the floor?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kissling to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Ware. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.